Hello, I'm Becky Veeby. I'm the Bureau Chief of Chalk Beach, Chicago. And welcome to our inaugural School Board Candidate Forums. These are conversations with the people hoping to represent you running in the Chicago's historic first school board elections. If you're tuning in live on YouTube, please, if you have questions for the candidates, you can leave them in the comments and we will do our best to get to them. Without further ado, we are starting this morning with District One. And we are very happy to welcome the candidates of District One, starting with Jennifer Custer. Jennifer is a CPS parent and former teacher, union leader, and school administrator in the Chicago suburbs and Wisconsin. She is currently a stay-at-home mom with her two sons, young sons, one of whom is in pre-K at her neighborhood school. Also joining us is Michelle Pierre, also a CPS parent. She's also the current board member at the Chicago High School for the Arts, which is a CPS contract school. That's where her daughter is a student. She's the former chief of schools at the Learn Charter School Network, a former school district administrator in Cleveland, former principal in Washington DC, and a former teacher in New York City. Welcome, Michelle. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you guys both for having us, or being here.
Thanks for having us.
All right, we're going to start with a little icebreaker this morning. And I'll start with Michelle. We're going to ask you both, what was your favorite and least favorite subject in school?
So my favorite subject was English. I loved reading books. Tuck Everlasting was one of my favorite books around deciding if you want to live forever or not was that storyline. And I just always thought it was so interesting how writers can bring you into a story, make you think about things that you never would think about. So English would be my favorite subject. Gym would be my least favorite subject because I was never selected for dodgeball. I was always the last kid to be selected for dodgeball. And so I hated going to gym and I hated when they were like, "We're going to play dodgeball." I'm like, "Well, let me just stand on the side." I wasn't as strategic of a player for playing dodgeball.
I thought you were going to say because you had to have it like first period.
Yes.
Right away at the start of the day.
Yep, no, it was dodgeball.
All right, all right. Jennifer, how about you? Favorite and least favorite subject during growing up?
My favorite was also English. I also love reading very much, still a very avid reader. So that's a passion of mine for sure. I was actually a seventh grade language arts teacher for many years. So kind of took my passion into my career. I would say my least favorite class was probably math, unfortunately. Just always seemed to struggle. And it was funny because growing up, I would bring my homework home and my brother was a math whiz. So he would sit and help me with my math homework. And he was not quite as strong in language arts. So I would sit and help him with his math homework or his language arts homework. So we were nice little foils for each other all the time.
Something like ying and yang.
Yeah, very much so.
Yeah, I always say that with my husband because he's an engineer. I'm like, "You do the math and I'll do the English."
Yep.
All right, well, so we're going to start right off with something very timely and in the news. I'm going to do a yes/no question. And this first one, we're going to talk about CPS leadership. And I would like to know, if elected to the school board, would you vote to keep the current CPS CEO, Pedro Martinez, in the role of CPS CEO? And in about 30 seconds, could you say why or why not? And I'll start with you, Jennifer.
Yes, I would. I think that Pedro has done a great job. And one of the things that I appreciate the most about Pedro is his championing of the school district. It's very easy to talk about the negative that's going on in schools. It's very easy to talk about all of the problems that happen in schools. It's very difficult to champion the success stories that we're seeing. And he does a very good job of that.
Okay, how about you, Michelle? Would you keep him in his role?
Yes, I have spoken out about this already, about that I want him to stay. I think he has been an effective CEO of the district, thinking through the different crises that we've had. He's been steadfast, he's been consistent. And I'm also happy that he is not trying to do the high interest loan and that he's being focused on making sure that we are fiscally sound as a district.
You touched on one of my next yes or no questions, which if folks hadn't seen the news over the weekend, the entire seven-member school board is stepping aside. And this morning, later this morning, Mayor Brandon Johnson is expected to name new school board members at the time of this taping. We don't yet know who those people will be. One of the issues has been Pedro Martinez's performance, but the other has been what Michelle mentioned, which is this high-interest loan to help cover operating costs related to non-teaching pensions and future contracts with both the principals and the teachers' union. Yes or no, do you support taking out a high-interest loan to cover those operating costs in the short term? Michelle?
The answer is no. I have been very clear since I started campaigning for District One that I want us to be fiscally sound. We have to do the, make the hard choices. We need leadership to make the hard choices to be able to support our students and the city of Chicago.
How about you, Jennifer? Do you support that?
I do not. I think that it is also not a good idea. I think it's a short-term solution that creates much longer-term problems. And it's the job of the school board to not just think about the current year or the next year. It's to look five, 10, and even 20 years ahead in the school district and see that vision forward. And that is not a helpful, not a helpful choice.
Okay. So let's, after those yes or no's, unpack both leadership and budget. What qualities would you like to see in a CPS CEO? Because when Pedro Martinez's contract does end, if it ends at its normal time or if it ends sooner, the board is tasked with selecting a CEO. What qualities do you believe a CPS CEO should have? And we'll start with Jennifer.
Sure. Looking for a CEO, looking for a superintendent, whatever a school district decides to call it, is a process that takes a long time. There's a lot of questions, there's a lot of interviews, there's a lot that goes on in that process. And I think it's really important to look at a person who has some kind of vision moving forward, something that they see the district working towards and has goals and ideas on how we're going to get there. They have strategic plans on what that will look like. They consider all of the different stakeholders that are involved. They look at the budget, they look at the students, they look at the makeup of the district, and they understand kind of how all cogs in that wheel make it move forward and really have a good vision overall for what that school looks like.
How about you, Michelle? What qualities would you want in a CPS CEO?
So there's four qualities that I think about for a CEO. One, are they results-driven? Our city deserves to have a high-performing school district. And so how are they, what was their past performance in getting results? And then what is their vision on helping our district to get results and be the best school district in the country? So that's the first piece. Like, they have to be results-driven. Two is, what is their knowledge base around budget? We are such a, we're the fourth-largest school district in the country. You have to be able to understand how to manage your CFO. And so what is their previous knowledge, their work to making sure that we are maximizing our budget? Three, I want them to be community-oriented. We have a great district with 50 words of diversity that we love in Chicago. And so how have they connected previously in their community? And how does communities feel about them? And fourth, how are they going to be able to manage and support the board in the KPIs that we set, the key performance indicators on moving the work forward? And so board management is very important in this role. So of course, in my current position, I work with a lot of districts and boards. And so I have been able to understand, like, what are some of the key things that really gets the superintendent off on the right start? And how did board select for that? And that's the reason why I have selected those four things.
Quick follow-up for both of you. Do you believe that the CPS CEO or superintendent should be an educator or have a background in education? Michelle?
Yeah, so I think it is extremely helpful to have a background in education because you understand what leadership is going through. When you're provided that data point, you're like, "Oh, I understand what this is connected to." When you're advocating with state legislators, you can be able to speak to, like, "When I did this, this is why we need these supports." I think that is really helpful. However, I do understand with the complexity of our school district, we might take a different route. But I would love for them to have an education background.
How about you, Jennifer?
I agree with that. I think it is important that they have some kind of education background. It's not always the reality, but I think that having that background really helps the CEO to understand sort of what the day-to-day looks like. Also very relatable to the teachers and to the people that serve in those schools because they understand what the job is, what the role is, sometimes the struggle, and all of those things. So it helps to build those relationships even all the way from the top down. So I do think that an education background is important, not entirely necessary, you know, if the board would decide to go a different route. But I think it really does help.
It's a big plus for both of you, but not necessarily a requirement. Okay. Let's move on to the budget specifically. Both of you touched on this as a key thing. You'd want the CEO to be able to handle and manage. Two more quick yes or no questions related a little bit to the loan question. Do you think the city or CPS, or I should say, do you think that CPS should pick up part of the cost of non-teaching pensions as it has since 2020? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
You're saying CPS should?
CPS. Do you believe CPS should pick up that 100, right now it's the $175 million contribution to the municipal employee pension fund?
Yes.
Okay. And do you also, do you think the state should provide CPS with additional funding than it does currently?
Yes.
I see both nodding. Okay, so we'll assume that's a yes. And then on that question, how would you, as a board member, go about working with state and other elected officials, including city council, aldermen, and potentially other elected officials at the state and federal levels, to get more funding for CPS? What's your approach to intergovernmental relations?
So I think, first of all, we have to show the state and the federal government that we actually know how to use our budget effectively. And so the first key piece is making sure as a board that we have thought through our budget, how we're using it, and can clearly state where the gaps are and why there are gaps. I think just going to the state legislators or going back to the federal government and say, "We just need money," is not helpful to them. But I think we can show to them the discrepancy and the comparison between us and other districts around the state and the country and say, "Hey, this is why we need more funds," and how we plan to use the funds to get a return on that investment. At the end of the day, people want to see that when we are putting the right funds, we are actually doing what needs to be done for children and getting results for the kids that we serve. So I think we have to be able to show that by having a strong budget transparency, being able to review the data that we're looking at, and then be able to show where the gaps are and why the gaps are happening from the federal and state level. Because I know that property taxes, we are paying a lot in the city of Chicago to support the schools. So my constituents are doing their part. We need the state and the federal government to help us.
Jennifer, how about you? Your approach to working with lawmakers and other governments?
So I think that I got quite a leg up on this. I've had a lot of elected endorsement in my race currently, and I spend a lot of time talking with these people. And I think historically, because the board hasn't been elected, some of those roles have fallen on, like, the aldermen of our area and things like that, to work with the schools and build those relationships. So those aldermen, those older women, understand what's going on in those schools that fall within their wards. They've already built relationships with those principals and with the community members there. So being able to have those conversations and talk about what the realities are and what schools really need is a great way into doing that. And we have to be able to build those relationships with those people in order to then go and advocate for what we really need. And it goes beyond just the aldermen and into your senators and things like that because the relationship between Springfield and Chicago does have to be restored. It does have to be rebuilt. It really hasn't been very good for a long time. And if we want to try and bring in different revenue sources from downstate or even within the city of Chicago, we are going to have to have people that we work with, elected officials that we work with, that we have these quality relationships with, to make that happen. Because we have to kind of work as a team if we want to rebuild that.
So in its most recent budget, Chicago Public Schools forecasted out at least five years what the deficits look like. They're around 500 million every year. We're facing essentially a structural deficit. That's before any new teacher's contract is negotiated, principal's contract potentially negotiated. What is your approach or how do you think about how you would want to see the district balance the budget? What would get your vote, if you are on the board, to pass a balanced budget? What kinds of measures would you be supportive of in order to close those deficits? And we'll start with Jennifer this time.
So I think trying to bring some of that money back up from Springfield is going to be a really big piece of this, trying to pull that evidence-based funding money up. But I also think we're going to have to look at how do we offload that pension burden from the budget so that we can free up some of those resources. Chicago is the only state, excuse me, the only school district in the state that pays for that pension, and nobody else does. And so we are going to have to talk about, like, how can we relieve some of that a little bit? It's going to be a lot of really tough decisions. It's going to be a lot of conversation about where are our values and what's really important? Because taking on loans and things like that to fill in that deficit isn't going to work for us. So we're going to have to live within our means and figure out what are our values, where do we place them, and how do we spend our money wisely in order to do that? But I think we also have to look at how are we going to exhaust every revenue source that we possibly have? How are we going to see how we can pull more money in without raising people's taxes? Because they do pay a lot in taxes. So it is going to be this delicate balance of living within our means and searching for creative revenue streams in order to make sure that we fill in those gaps and fill in those deficits.
Michelle?
Yes. So I've been clear from day one, as I've been running, that I do not want to raise property taxes. As you know, in the profile, I state that because I know my constituents do not want that immediately. Like, they want to see, like, how can we actually balance this budget? So two things why I feel like I have a strong background in this area is, one, I worked in this Cleveland School District. We had a $1 billion budget that we had to manage. And did we have to make some cuts? And the answer is yes. And so have I been through this process? Yes. So do I know what it means to go out to my constituents and have good conversations about what's working, what's not? Where would you like to see us push and pull in the budget? That's one piece. The second piece is, I have studied and have a certificate from Georgetown University around budgeting for school finance. And one of the key issues that they raised that boards don't do is, like, look at the return on investment. So they said, "Besides your big-ticket items like salaries, look at your smaller-ticket items and identify, like, are you actually getting the return on investment, which you are using this for, and can you consolidate?" The third piece that I would do is look at different revenue sources that we are having. There's a lot of partnerships that we can do in the district. How do we maximize and utilize our buildings to bring in more revenue that are underutilized? Like, are we doing that currently? The answer is no. Should we be doing that? The answer is yes. And the last piece is, is increased enrollment. We know that how you increase your budget is bringing back children. I am the candidate that has done that type of work by increasing the enrollment when I was a principal and turning around my school. I also did that when I was in Cleveland by working with the investment strategy to figure out how to bring families back into the school district. And so those are the ways, there's not that many ways that we can close the gap. But one of them is making sure that we work with our families to say, "How do you come back in? How do we get you to be a part of the CPS family?" And that's also how we close the gap.
I should apologize. I did not turn the sound off there. I did not mean to interrupt that question, but thank you for that answer. I did want to, before we move on from budget, I did want to ask both of you the property tax question. This is something that Chalk Beat asked with, in conjunction with WBEZ and the Sun Time. So we do know that you both have stances on property taxes and raising them to the limit that is allowed by law. But just for good measure, could you both explain, do you support raising property taxes to that cap allowed by state law? Or do you not want to hit that cap?
Are you talking about property taxes or the levy?
Property tax, the levy that the board has to vote on every single year.
Gotcha. So I would support raising the levy as a short-term solution. Levis are not the same thing as raising property taxes. So when the taxes are collected, they go in a bucket and we take a certain percentage of that money. That's the levy. Raising the levy takes a little bit more of the percentage out of that bucket of money. And yes, we could raise the levy to pull short-term finances out and do that. It's not a long-term solution by any means. It's important to get that levy back to where it normally is. But yes, you could, you could raise the levy temporarily, pull in some money, and try and, you know, make that work. But that's not the same, and I want to be really clear, as raising property taxes. Raising property taxes is a completely separate thing. Raising the levy just pulls more money out of the pot so that you can use it. But like I said, it's not a long-term solution.
Okay. Michelle?
Yes. So where do we get the levy funds from?
The taxes, yes.
From taxes. So I just want that to be very clear to constituents as we are talking about this. So, one, I do not propose to raise that because simply, we are putting a Band-Aid over something that needs real structural change, and my constituents don't want that. And so I am again proposing, like, we're going to have to make hard choices and we have to be focused on students. I will always stand by, like, how are we making sure that our students get what they need, our schools get what they need? But we have to think about around the fringes. What are we going to cut so that we can put this back into place?
Okay. Moving on to school choice, yes/no? Do you believe that Chicago Public Schools should change admissions policies? Any admissions policies? Yes or no?
No.
No? Okay. Could you both elaborate on why you feel the current admissions policies should stay in place and are fair and equitable? Michelle?
Yes. So one of the things that I just want to speak to is that we believe that our families should be able to choose what is best for their children. So that's one big piece. And so we don't want to lessen school options. We want to broaden the school options that our families have, whether it's their neighborhood schools or a variety of different types of schools that we can create and bring back families. The second piece is, I do want to make sure that our admission process into certain types of schools, that it is equitable. So we might not have to be able to change it, but we might sit here and think through, like, is this meeting the needs of all of our families? How is it doing that? And review those standards. And so that's one of the pieces that I want to always review as we look at data to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our community.
Okay. Jennifer?
So having, for the first time ever, had to enroll my son in a CPS school, I understand the confusion and how difficult it can be to go through that process. But I do think that parents should pick the school that is best for their children. That's one of the unique things, actually, about the Chicago Public School system, is that you can pick a school that serves the needs of your child best that might not necessarily be your neighborhood school. And it's something that makes us special and something that really makes us unique. And parents are the people, I think, who know what's best for their students. Obviously, some schools are selective enrollment, some schools are magnet, and so they're a lottery system. But a lot of parents still put their kids' names in there or, you know, the kids take the test to get in these schools because it has a program, it has something that the parents feel like is great for their kids. So I think keeping that choice for parents is really important. They are going to want to get the best education they possibly can for their kids. I also agree with the equity lens. We need to make sure that we are providing the equity for all students to be able to get into these schools and that they all have the opportunity to do so. That also comes with its own challenges because some kids may be going far away from home to get to the best school that best serves their needs. And being able to get them there and make sure that they can be successful in that environment is going to be important as well.
So Chicago's school choice system has magnet schools and selective schools that these admissions policies govern. Separate of that, another element of choice in the school system is the existence of charter schools, which are publicly funded, privately-run schools. We have more than 100 in the CPS system. And the Chicago Board of Education is in charge of approving the contracts with the providers of those charter schools. Having worked in one, Michelle, I'm sure you're familiar with this. In the past, the Board of Education has taken steps to end charter school contracts when those schools are not performing well or have financial troubles. This most recently happened with urban prep, though there was a legal battle that ensued. Are you in favor of ending charter school agreements in cases where schools are not performing well or have financial troubles, even if that means it leads to a school closure? And we'll start with Michelle.
Yes. So being in the charter world and in a traditional school system world, I believe that charters, and if you speak to leaders of charter networks or even standalone, they expect to have a higher standard. There is that expectation because of the simple fact they don't have the same governance model. So I always try to remind everyone that charter schools are public schools. They are authorized by CPS. The kids are counted in CPS data. And so they're not separate schools. They are part of schools, they're just governed differently. So that's one big piece. But because they are governed differently, they should have higher expectations. They should get results for kids. And so I am all for being able to hold them accountable and closing them if they're not doing right by children and, in addition, having financial issues. Because that is the right of the CPS authorization. And because I've had experience on both sides, so in Cleveland, we authorized charter schools. And so we had a very clear process of how to manage them and close them when they were not appropriate. And then I also understand the other side being in there and being, you know, authorized and giving another contract, which we did receive when, under my leadership. So I think that gives me a perspective on this board that would be different, which will help for us to manage charter schools more effectively, to make sure they're getting the results for the kids that they serve. And primarily, most charter schools actually serve their neighborhood students.
Jennifer, are you in favor of ending charter contracts?
This is a complicated question, I feel like, because a lot of our charter schools in the city are located on the south and the west side. And we know that when we close schools in those areas, it hurts kids, any schools. So while I'm not in favor of expanding the charter school network, I think it would take a lot of conversation and a lot of talk about what is the effect that that would have on students. I do think charter schools should be held to the same standards as the rest of the public schools. I do think if they're struggling, that yes, that's something that definitely needs to be looked at. But when we talk about school closures, we're talking about hurting children and we're talking about affecting families in the community. And I don't think there's a simple black and white answer to that question. I think we have to look at what community is it in? What kind of impact is it going to have on that community? Is there a way to help rehabilitate that school and help that school come out of whatever situation that it's in? Because if the school closure hurts the community and hurts the students, absolutely, I don't want to do that. If there are, you know, other options for parents and other places that they can send their kids to continue to get a high-quality education, perhaps it's a different conversation. But when you think about the location of a lot of the charter schools, I think we have to be really careful about how that affects the communities that these students live in.
All right. I want to move on to some equity questions related to students who have additional needs in our system. And so we do have a lot of English-language learners. Anyone who's been, you know, living in Chicago the last two years knows we've seen a number, you know, thousands of families who've arrived from the southern border, and those children have enrolled in our schools. Our enrollment has stabilized and is increasing, partly due to the influx of migrant students. However, many district schools lack bilingual staff. They lack bilingual certified teachers to teach bilingual programming. And I am curious, as a board member, what would you do to ensure that those bilingual resources are making it to schools in a quick manner and as needed, as quickly as possible? Because we've seen this now for two years, and yet we still have a lot of schools without those supports. So Jennifer, we'll start with you. What could you do as a board member?
Yes. So I saw this happen, play out in real time when I was an administrator in Addison. We had a huge influx of newcomers to our school as well. And it was hard. We had whole classrooms that we had to kind of create and develop, and it was very difficult. And I think one of the things that we had to work really hard on was also making sure that we offered opportunities to our staff to go back and get their ESL endorsements, something that incentivized them to do this, to continue to serve the population of students that we were getting in. It required a lot of education, both for the families that were moving in and for our teachers and staff in the building to understand the changes that our buildings were going through and the new families that were moving in. A lot of the families moving in have a very different experience with education. And so it was a lot of teaching them about what is the American school system like and what is the expectation of your child. But it's also really important that we try and recruit some of those teachers to our buildings. And that means we're going to have to be a school district that is welcoming, a school district that offers possibly mentorship programs, a school district that offers great professional development, one that's friendly and welcoming. And so it's going to be a big culture change too for our district to say like, these are the teachers we need. Please come in, please join us and help us, you know, make sure that all of the students get a fair education.
Michelle?
Yes, so I have been a teacher in a bilingual school. I have been the chief academic officer where I had to provide those supports and making sure that our kids had those pieces. And then here in Chicago, supporting our families. The biggest piece is to identify what are the different routes that we can get people immediately certified? And so that is the piece that we can work with ISB, the Illinois State Board of Education, to be able to say, here's where we can like provide some support or leniency so that we can get the best people. We actually have a great community who wants to be able to support us. And so asking for ISB, not to lower standards for us, that's not what I want. I always want the highest standards for our kids. But when we find a great person and they want to work in our schools, how can we, side by side, be able to give them a temporary license to be able to do that work immediately? So like you said, our kids do not get a redo. They need the support today. And so those are the things that I would request, to be able to make sure that we have those in our schools. I think being on the board, be able to speak to the board about these pieces, talking about licensers in other states, how they worked around it. That would be great for me to have a conversation with ISB so that they can actually say, okay, this is what we can do to support Chicago and the other districts. Because we are a welcoming district, we have great staff already. It literally is a checkpoint to say, oh, they have the license to be able to do both of the programmings in their schools.
Okay, students with disabilities. The Chicago Public Schools has long had difficulty providing students with disabilities with the services that they're owed. The pandemic worsened this. Chalkbeat has done a lot of reporting on services owed. And in recent years, really where this has become a very crisis sort of level issue is getting students with disabilities to school. Transportation has been troubled for the last four, at least, years. And in particular, students with disabilities are not getting on routes in an expeditious manner. And the state is again, opening a complaint against the district on busing students with disabilities, making sure they're getting to school not only on time, but quickly and not sitting on the bus for more than an hour. So as a board member, given that this issue has really hung over the district, even oversight from ISB hasn't seemed to solve the problem, what as a board member could you do or would you do to ensure that students with disabilities are not waiting a month into the school year for a bus route? Jennifer, we'll start with you.
So this is where we really also need to get creative about how we're getting our kids to school. I know that the district proposed the bus hubs. How is that really working in reality? I'm not really sure. So I would be interested to see like the progress on that and how that's been working out and has that changed at all? And are we getting kids to school? But it feels like, and this is just the perception, but it feels like the transportation issue is always left to the last minute to discuss. It's a conversation we should be having earlier. It's something we should be talking about earlier. How do we get bus drivers to come to our district? How can we incentivize them to come and work for us? How can we, you know, find solutions to some of this issue? There is a national bus driver shortage, we know that. But we have a huge responsibility to get these kids to school and we have to start problem solving sooner on how we're going to do those things. So what does that look like? I don't know. I don't feel like there's been a lot of information even shared by the board about what they've really done and what this really looks like. And so I'd be really interested to learn a lot more information about what's been done in the past, what's been tried in the past. The answer just kind of always seems to be, we don't have bus drivers. But what have they done so far to try and change that? So trying to recruit these people, trying to create a fair wage, trying to make sure that we can incentivize them to come here and get these kids on buses to school.
Michelle?
Yes, so I think there are, the immediacy around finding the support is the key factor. We have heard CEO Martinez talk about the fact that they have been looking for bus drivers for a very long time. They have restructured their salaries to entice them. So we do know that they are taking steps to be able to find the bus drivers. So that then, if we are not able to do those pieces, like what are the other options that we have? We could be working with other transportation sources to say, hey, can you pick up our children and add them to our fleet? And yes, that might cost more, but don't our kids deserve that? And so when we are dealing with these budget constraints, we always have to think about the students first. And our students that need it the most, they need to be in school. And so we might need to jump over hoops and work with other agencies and organizations to bring our kids to school. But I think as a board member, that's what I would advocate for. Because I know the parent that has an autistic child that needs to be in school and get the supports is like wondering with their hands up, like, what do you want me to do? The parent that has to go to work is wondering, what do you want me to do with my kid? We, as a board member, have a variety of ways to be able to identify solutions and say, today, your child is going to be on transportation to get them to school.
It's also legally required for these students. So it requires prioritization as well, which is very difficult as a board member, you know? You guys have to balance the needs of many different constituents. And I want to also touch on special education as it relates to, once they do get to school. This is an area, again, similar to bilingual education, we are lacking, the staffing shortages tend to be the most acute in those special education positions. What can the board do to make those staffing shortages lessen and make, fill those positions? What exactly would you be in favor of in terms of helping solve the staffing shortages in special education? Michelle?
Yes, so again, having district level experience gives me insight in what is happening in a district. And so whether it was here in Chicago or in Cleveland, me being able to identify like, where are our needs at? How have we identified our staffing? Again, when you are doing scheduling, when you are looking at staffing for schools, you always think about our diverse learners and our bilingual students, and you are trying to place them and support the different needs. So you are running schedules early in the school, in the spring semester, so you can see where the bulk of our children are going to be. You identify the gaps and then you sit there and look at your staffing components. So that's one piece that as a board member, because I have insight into what they should be doing, I can be asking management to say, have you provided us with the schedules? Where are our gaps and what are you doing about that, starting in the spring semester? So that's the first piece. The second piece is our recruitment and supports. Again, it, it will sound like I am saying the same thing about our bilingual around asking ISB to be able to give us some leniency in our requirements so that we can get the right people to be able to support our children, to, to make sure that they're there. Again, there are people that want to be dual certified in our district. How do we make that sound great to them? How do we give them incentives to be in those positions? And how do we like celebrate them for doing the hard work? I think also people forget, when you're in a diverse learner position, it is a lot. You are supporting the kids that need us, need us the most. And so how do we make those positions also feel supported and highlight the great work that they're doing? I don't know if we are doing that as a school district, but I would want to make sure that happens as a board member.
Jennifer, what about you? How would you solve the special education staffing shortage?
It does feel a little like a broken record, but we know we're in a national teacher shortage across the country. We know that. And we know that for every district around the country, it's been very hard to pull teachers in. And much, kind of like my answer with the, the dual language learners, like trying to find ways that we can incentivize our teachers to go out and get their LBS1s, their LBS2s, case manager.
These are special certifications?
Yes, yes, sorry, these are special certifications for people who work with special needs students. Like being able to incentivize them to go out and get those so that we have flexibility in our staff, so that we have the ability to say, like, this person has dual endorsements, they can do all of these different things. And not that they do them all, but like we have the flexibility to move people around, perhaps where the need is greater. And, and it helps make it a little bit easier for the district to say, like, yes, you can teach this and this and this. This is where the greatest need is and this is where we really need your support. And then continuing to support them in those roles. So it's one way to kind of solve this problem because we are having a really hard time pulling people in. But these students need that support. They need those case managers to make sure that we are staying in compliance with the state. That's a huge issue. We have to make sure that we're doing that. We need these people to make sure that these minutes are being met, that these teachers know what the accommodations are for these students so they can continue to be successful. We can't talk about student success if we can't talk about their success also. So it's really important that we look at, how can we help the staff that we already have maybe continue to support our kids in different ways as we continue to try and make our school district look enticing to other teachers to come and work to? And I do think that means we give support to the teachers. We develop a culture that respects and supports their professionals that work in these buildings. And, and we can try and be competitive as well, you know, with those teachers too.
On both of these issues, you both have mentioned, mentioned incentives. When you say that, are you talking about primarily financial incentives? Whether that be a salary pay bump or a bonus or a, when you say incentive, could you explain to me kind of what you mean, Michelle?
Yes, so I think there are two ways to incentivize. There's not always a financial incentive. You can think about their flexibility in schedules, which people, especially when you have families you would love. And so I think we need to speak to our teachers and ask them like, what would incentivize you to do this? And you will hear a variety of different things that our teachers want. Some of it is like, I just want more support, I just want better curriculum. We can provide that to them. So it's not always like a salary increase or a bonus. I do think that does help if they are working towards getting an additional certification. You do need to take classes and we don't want to put that burden on them. So of course, that would be a way to be able to support them. But when you actually talk to teachers about what they want when they get into these classrooms, it's usually flexibility around what they're teaching, the supports around their resources that they get, which we should be able to provide as a district.
Jennifer?
Yeah, I don't think that it is always, excuse me, a financial component either. I mean, no one becomes a teacher for the fame and the money. So I think that a lot of teachers want to feel seen. I think a lot of teachers want to know that they're appreciated. And I think even just showing up for teachers and saying, I see you and you're doing a fantastic job, is something that they really appreciate it. I know I always appreciated it when someone would walk into my classroom and be like, wow, you're doing a fantastic job. Like, this is great. The kids are learning, they're engaged, you're doing so great. So I do think that there is a lot of support that's needed on the culture side of it. That, that we show up for these people and we, we visit their schools, we visit their classrooms, we allow them the flexibility. We do those kinds of things because I think when you talk to teachers, and I've talked to a lot of teachers as I've knocked doors, they love their jobs. They do. They'll tell me at the door, I love my job, I do this, I do this, I teach here. They love it. But what they want is someone to also kind of pat them on the back. It's thankless. And we need to also change our culture a little bit so that when people talk about, oh, I work at CPS, it's a great school district to work for.
Well, there'll be 21 of you now who can maybe do that for them. We're going to move on to facilities and infrastructure. This is something that has become very acute, an acute challenge for the school district, which has, the average age of a school building is around 83 or 84 years old. And as I mentioned earlier, the district has seen modest enrollment increases. But the overall number of students has declined and is dramatically lower than it was more than a decade ago. We do have schools that are more than half empty. And both of you did say no on our questionnaire when asked if you supported school closings for low enrollment. You were not in favor of that. So how should CPS balance its current enrollment with the hundreds of CPS buildings it also has to operate and heat and maintain? Jennifer, we'll start with you.
I think this is a question of programming. What can we bring back to some of those neighborhood schools? What can we offer some of those schools that are going to make them more enticing for people to stay within their neighborhoods? Can we bring arts programs there? Can we bring STEM programs there? What can we do to offer different programming so that people say, oh, wow, did you hear that our neighborhood school just adopted this? And it brings people back to their own neighborhoods and it makes those neighborhood schools a place where people want to go. They're leaving their, their neighborhoods for potentially some other reason. And a lot of other schools have a lot of other options. And so how do we bring those programs and bring those things back to those areas so that kids want to stay and families want to stay and they want to continue to grow and invest in their own communities?
Okay, Michelle, how about you?
Yes, so again, I think it is around how we are pulling in our families and our communities. So two things. One, I have had experience in doing this work, whether it's me as a principal, when I was told that they were going to close my building in two years because we were under enroll. And I was like, oh, I don't want that to happen. And so I literally went to my community and said, what do we need to do to bring you back in? And changed that around, that school is still open. My daughter got to go to that school because I had a conversation with the community. If you build it, they will come. And so three things that I think we should definitely do. So one is have community conversations in the areas that have been hit the most by the underutilization and say to them like, what is it that you need to bring your children back to the schools? And people that don't have kids in schools yet. Because those families are moving into Chicago, moving into different areas, which we're so excited about. So we need to be saying to them, what does this look like for you? When your child turns three, when your child turns five, why would you want to come here? And start building those programs now so when they have their children ready, they go, this is where I want to bring my children. So when I was in Cleveland, we had the investment school strategy. We did exactly that. We went to our communities, we had partner organizations run those community conversations and say, what are your hopes and dreams for this community? And they literally told us what they wanted and we created that. I already have talked to a couple of different people around like, would you come to Chicago to bring a new type of program? I was talking to Ted Ginn, we have that program in Cleveland where he created a great program for boys, especially black boys, to think about where they want to see their lives in the future and connected to sports. So a lot of our students went on to be at Ohio State, go into the NFL, but that program had a 98% graduation rate. That program had 97% attendance every day. Because we were innovative in the programming that we did, we brought back kids, we maintained the kids, and we got results. That's what I want to do on the board. Those are the connections that I already have to make those things happen in Chicago.
Got it. Sounds like programming is a big thing for both of you. I do want to talk about, the Board of Ed does, one of its key roles is to approve a capital plan. In the past, capital planning has been criticized as being kind of hard to understand, inequitable, lacking a true system for prioritization, that, you know, you don't know that suddenly this school is going to get new annex and that school is going to get repaired, but who knew? And we don't know what, what number we are on the list to get our leaky roof fixed. As board members now representing communities, you will have to advocate, one of your roles would be to advocate for people in your community. How do you balance the needs of your community with equity across the district when it comes to facility repairs in the capital plan? We'll start with Jennifer.
So I think it's important to remember that just because we are elected in our district doesn't mean we only represent our area. We serve the school board and the entirety of the city, but obviously, we do advocate for our own communities. But I think when we're looking at the capital improvements, which is a huge part of what I think needs to be done on the board, we need to audit some of our buildings and look at where the greatest need is for some of these repairs and we need to start there. And if that's not necessarily in the district that we are elected in, I think that's okay. We have to remember that we serve the entirety of the city and that when there's a greater need somewhere else, it's also our job to make sure that those students and those teachers are successful in those buildings. And if that's where the money needs to go and if that's where the projects need to start, I think that's okay. And we kind of chip away and we work at the greatest need first and we kind of make our way because it does need to be addressed, it does need to be worked on. And we need to make sure that these buildings are, are safe, learning environments for all of our students to be in every day.
All right, Michelle?
Yes, so I have worked on the west and south side of Chicago, so I understand what is happening in those communities. And so that provides me the opportunity as a board member to, one, represent my district because I live there. I get to walk past schools every single day. But also have a very different framing around what is going on in a variety of our neighborhoods across the city of Chicago. And so, one, we cannot only think about our district, but we should be able to advocate for our district. And that's what I plan to do as a board member. Two, I think, you know, looking at how we are sharing the information to our community is very important. So again, having the previous experience of doing a modernization plan, supporting that along with the COO in Cleveland, I was able to see like, what do communities truly want? Did communities barter and say, hey, if you do this for them right now, can we at least get this right now? Those were the conversations we had. And so communities didn't feel like, oh, blank only got this and we did not? Because we actually had conversations and said, well, we can get this project started one year later. If we do these two things, you will get this. We went out to our communities, had those conversations, we did polling, focus groups, and people said, yes, we, we can make those things happen. And so because I've had that experience in going through a modernization plan, because I have worked in the city of Chicago on the south and west side, I can really be able to sit on the board, have those conversations and say back to my constituents, here's what we're getting. This is how I advocated for you, but here's how we are thinking about Chicago as one city.
One of the reasons that school construction money is inequitable is that one of the sources is tax increment financing money. This is funds that are kept within a community to help spur and reverse blight. In Chicago, there's hundreds of TIFs and the TIF accounts often get used for school repairs. And schools in areas with more TIF money, mostly on the north side, end up having more ability to then fix up their schools and parks. Do you yes or no, support the use of TIF dollars for schools, for school repairs?
Yes.
Michelle, yes?
Yes.
And then given that, I'm curious if you could explain then how you would work with aldermen and people who control, aldermen and the mayor, the people who control those TIF counts, to ensure that that money is going to the schools with the greatest need? Go ahead.
So I think, again, when you actually have the data and people are thinking about students first, that's what I've always advocated for and just having the, the conversation and saying, hey, this is what we're doing. Again, I'm an independent voice. I am not beholden to anyone. But I know how to sit and have conversations with people and say, how can we work across the aisle to be able to do this? I think the example that I just showed around, had to do this in Cleveland. I had to talk to our councilman, had to talk to state legislators because they still have constituents there. To be able to do this, I think, again, it's providing I think, again, it's providing the information. Having the conversation, if we do this, then this will happen. People usually go along with it. But again, I'm an independent voice coming into this race to say, I'm going to fight for our children and I'm going to be able to make this happen. And I've done it before. And so I know what the conversations need to be had. I do know how to look at the budget to be able to identify where this is going. And I could also say, where are the cost savings? How are we using this with other types of information from the federal government that actually can provide us funding? Because if we are going to actually be greener and some of the infrastructure bills, if you look at that, we can actually use some of that money to actually support redoing our schools. And so those are the things that I want to do and be able to have conversations about.
Okay, Jennifer, how about you?
This is where I think your relationships with your aldermen are really important and things that, relationships that I've already pre-established. Like I said, they have typically been the people that have been working with the schools, working with the school principals, the school communities to see what they really need. They have a long-established history with those organizations already. And being able to talk to them and being able to say like, we have this TIF money, you know, we want to do some improvements in the school. Where do you see the most need? They have that historical context to say, these are the places that we've noticed that we've had these things. But also, get your butts in the building. Go see for yourself what's really going on in those schools and take a look at it for yourself. Work with your aldermen, have that relationship. And I think that's something that I've already pre-established with a lot of the elected officials in our district, that I can call them up and say, hey, let's have a conversation about how this money is spent and what is your recommendation as well? And how can we make this work for the best, you know, for our students here in our district?
Okay. As we come up toward the end of our conversation, I do, this is a district with just two candidates. I had planned to ask everyone to tell me, if you weren't running for school board, who would you vote for? But since there's only one other option, I think with both of you, what we'll do is if you could, Jennifer, we'll start with you. Let's say Michelle wins this seat. This is your opportunity to make an ask of her. What would you like her to prioritize if she becomes the winning District One candidate? And you'll have a chance to do the same, Michelle.
We actually have the sort of shared mutual understanding that like the academic achievement of our students is kind of number one. And so my ask would be the same ask that I would ask myself is, is how are we going to prioritize the academic health of our students? How are we going to make sure that our kids are still growing? What are we going to do to ensure that all of our students receive the best education possible? And so I do actually think that we have that in common. So it's an easy ask to make.
And Michelle, your turn. You need to ask Jennifer. She's the winner.
Again, Jennifer, I would just ask that we make sure that our parents really do have the choice that they want to have in our district. And how do we maximize and grow great schools so that parents have even more choice in our school district? And so that's what I would ask you to be able to do.
And then for our final wrap-up question, I would like both of you to dig into the archives of your own brains and tell us your favorite memory of your own school experience and how you think that shaped you today. If you have a favorite memory, we will start with Michelle because I believe Jennifer got to go first last time.
So my favorite memory was when I was in sixth grade. My favorite teacher is Ms. D'Amato. And she was a brand-new teacher. And sadly, my family was going through a divorce. So I had to wait for someone to pick me up an hour after school finished. So I was normally sitting outside, waiting for a bus to come pick me up. And Ms. D'Amato said, hey, why are you out here? And I told her the reason. And so she brought me into the classroom and said, hey, you can wash the boards, you can like do the spelling test, which kind of gave me the insight of what being a teacher is. Not the deepness of it, I wanted to say that. But she showed me what kindness and compassion is. And she helped me to understand, so when I became a teacher, that you don't know what is happening in the lives of our kids every single day. I was going through such a rough time. And so for that teacher to just give me that space to sit there and check papers or to wash the board, yes, I went to school when we still had chalkboards. I just want to note that. I'm not that old, but it's true.
I remember a chalkboard.
And we truly, like, that passion stayed with me as a teacher. Asking kids like, hey, I didn't see you yesterday, tell me more. You know? Because our kids, especially in the city of Chicago, goes through a lot. And so it is so important that we really reach out to our children, create a safe space for them and let them be able to tell us what they want to do and what they need so that we can provide that. I stayed a high-achieving student because Ms. D'Amato saw that in me and gave me the space to thrive in her classroom. And so that is the biggest memory. Of course, she has supported me running for Chicago School Board. She gave me the quote.
Oh, very nice.